To the People's House and Orangeboro Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting, October the 7th, 2025. At this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Jeff Sanford.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon Neesmith.
Here.
Mayor Tom Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Curtis Maglinger.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Glenn.
Here.
Thank you. This time, if you're able to stand, we'll have the invocation and the pledge by Commissioner Sharon Neesmith.
Dear Lord, there is no shortage of hostilities in this world. Everywhere we look, dividing lines are all around us, pushing us further from each other and shouting for us to take sides. Yet we know the love of God is the promotion of peace and unity. Let us listen, not to respond, but with intent to understand. Help us all to practice promoting peace in our relationships and make wise decisions as our community moves forward. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Beth. This time, I would like to invite a couple people nobody knows, Kathy and Tommy Mullins, to the front, please. Hello, Kathy. How are you? You doing? Everything all right?
All right.
You can't get rid of him?
[laughing]
Okay, this is from the City of Orangeboro. We were going to do this at the Gold Star thing, and I think I had belly issues or something. I couldn't make it, so we decided we'd get a little bit better push out of social media and things like that here anyway. So, whereas since World War I, Gold Star families have borne the sacrifice of losing a loved one who gave their life in the service of our nation, whereas the Gold Star has become a symbol of that ultimate sacrifice. And I'm not going to do this one. Representing the servicemember's courage and the devotion to duty, as well as the strength and resilience of the family they left behind. And whereas Gold Star Mothers and Families serve as a living legacy of their loved ones, service reminding us of the true cost of freedom. And whereas the last Sunday in September has been designated as National Gold Star Mothers and Families Day, a time for our nation and community to pause, reflect, and honor those families who have given so much. And whereas it is fitting, we express our deepest gratitude to Gold Star Mothers and Families in Orangeboro and across the nation for the sacrifice and their continued service to their communities. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Hart Watson, Mayor of the City of Orangeboro, do hereby proclaim September the 28th as National Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. In Orangeboro, I encourage all citizens to honor and remember the families of Americans fallen. Sound sealed this September the 25th, day almost. Thomas Hart Watson. [applause]
Okay, grip and grin.
There it is.
We did?
Grip.
Grip.
Grin.
And if you could hold it under 25 minutes, please say something.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Well, thank you.
Oh, good shoot.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Watson. We do sincerely appreciate this token of appreciation for the Gold Star community. We want to thank you personally for your leadership in bringing the Gold Star Monument through the Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation to the Owensboro community, a place where Gold Star family members can gather together, as well as teach everyone in this community about the costs of freedom. Our community has a beautiful World War II memorial there at the sports center that actually lists by name those members that have died while in action on active duty. And there are hundreds. So, on behalf of the entire Gold Star community, not just our family, we thank you so much for the leadership that you have shown, for that this city has shown throughout the years, I mean embracing what it truly means, the cost of freedom, and also providing such a public place, Smothers Park, for that new monument that brings people together. In fact, during Sunday's ceremony, we didn't stop the ceremony, but it was really fitting to hear children laughing in the background. They were enjoying their freedom. Families were there freely to enjoy this beautiful city. So, thank you again so much, and we look forward to many, many years to come embracing what this truly means. Thank you.
You're here. Okay. Present to Father Baker Lutz. Oh, there it is. This be Manufacturing Month.
Manufacturing Month, that's right.
Didn't change clothes since I saw you this morning. Yeah. Uh-oh. It's mad at me for not having the thing. Okay. On behalf of the citizens of Orangeboro, all our retirees and all our employees, this is a proclamation for Manufacturing Month. Whereas manufacturing is a vital part of our local, state, and national economy, providing good-paying jobs and contributing to economic growth and innovation. And whereas the manufacturing sector is a cornerstone of Orangeboro, Kentucky, employing thousands of skilled workers and supporting numerous businesses throughout the region. Whereas manufacturing companies in Orangeboro are leaders in their industry, producing a wide range of goods, from automobile parts to food products to high-tech equipment and consumer goods. And whereas Manufacturing Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the important role that manufacturers play in our community, recognize their contributions, and promote opportunities within the industry to student, job seekers, and the public. Whereas the Greater Owensboro Economic Development Corporation, along with local manufacturers, educators, and community organizations, is committed to fostering a skilled workforce that meets the needs of our local manufacturers and enhances the quality of life for all citizens. Whereas Manufacturing Month aims to highlight the importance of manufacturing to the economy, raise awareness of the career opportunities available in manufacturing, and encourage future generations to pursue careers in this dynamic field and evolving sector. Therefore, I, Thomas Hart Watson, Mayor of the City of Orangeboro, do hereby claim October 25th, Manufacturing Month in Orangeboro, and encourage all citizens to join me. All right. All right. [applause] Okay. I can cut that mic off if you get too hard.
All right. I'll keep it short.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor Watson, thank you so much for the opportunity to accept and for you all to proclaim this as Manufacturing Month. I've got a few statistics that I'd like to share with everyone, just to highlight the incredible importance of our manufacturing community here in Greater Owensboro. Manufacturing plays a central role in Greater Owensboro's economy, employing more than 7,400 residents and representing 14.8% of our total workforce. Manufacturing careers in Davis County provide strong incomes that support families and fuel local growth. Manufacturing contributed 1.6 billion in GDP in 2024, accounting for 23.8% of a county's total GDP compared to 10.1% nationally. Manufacturers make 4.5 billion in annual supplier purchases, with 1.2 billion of those purchases, 27% sourced locally from Davis County businesses. So, those statistics alone help everyone know and better understand manufacturing matters in Greater Owensboro. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Next, the item on the agenda, Bluegrass Music Initiative update. The long-winded Steve Johnson, director.
Do we still need to say where we're from and all that? I don't know if we do that anymore, anyway.
Go ahead.
Steve Johnson, 2068 Sussex Plate, Orangeboro, Kentucky. Great to be back in this building. A lot of you probably don't know, but way back when, like probably my first job, I ran the city pools with, I think it was Phil Hoskins and Cindy Sturgeon were there, and then, of course, hung out in this building with my mom, who was the second female elected city commissioner. So, it's great to be here tonight. Thank you so much. I'll be brief. There should be some handouts that you all have as members of commissions, but I do want to offer my thanks for supporting Bluegrass Music, and really, all generous music in our community, not just bluegrass music in our community. Your presence, everybody here, means the world to me. It also, there's many artists that we have across the country, and I also want to say thanks to them for what they do. Stay tuned later this month. You're going to hear more about the Greater Owensboro Music Census when we roll that out. Can't tell you what it's going to be yet, when it's going to be, but stay tuned for that. You'll see it soon. And thanks to the almost 600 people that actually took the survey on that. It's fascinating results. You guys are going to love what that is. I want to say special thanks to Adam and Deb for being here. Scott Napier from OCTC. We've been through a lot together over the last three years, and I'm grateful for each one of you all. Truly am. I don't know if you saw it, probably not, but today, yesterday, actually, in Bluegrass Online Magazine, Bluegrass Today, Owensboro was featured in there for the presentation that was given to Dr. Williams and Scott Napier of OCTC. And again, I'll just say that if you're from Owensboro, we're famous, particularly outside of Owensboro. We're really famous. So, I also want to say thanks to Rick Ferris over the last three years. One thing I'll say about Rick, he was nominated first round for a Grammy Award 2026 Bluegrass Album of the Year. I think I brought that, Rick. So, hang on to it. It was released here in Owensboro just a couple of months ago. So, really look forward. And you know you got my vote. Not that I can vote, but you know I got my vote. But I do want to say that, you know, what we've been through is pretty high-touch stuff with Rick. And last night, I was joking with my bride about Rick's kind of my Rod Tidwell, and I'm the Jerry Maguire, if you've ever seen that movie. But no one really fully understands the journey we've been through over the last three years, than Rick and myself. No question about that, right, brother?
Yeah.
No doubt about it. So, yesterday, I sent Adrian 19 pages of background materials to the Board of Commissioners and Staff for review. Hopefully, you have that. As Mayor Watson's often told me, I'm not interested in you telling me how to build a watch. Just tell me what time it is, Steve. So, that being said, I'm honored to give you a brief update of the Bluegrass Music Initiative, now celebrating the three-year anniversary. Owensboro was first branded the Bluegrass Music Capital of the World by the Owensboro Tourist Commission in 1985. In the decades that followed, the city has become home to major milestones. The founding of the International Bluegrass Music Association, the establishment of the Bluegrass Music Hall of Fame, and eventually, the opening of the Bluegrass Music Hall of Fame and Museum right down the road. All thanks to the vision of Terry Woodward and others, certainly. Last week, I was in Chattanooga for the IBMA World of Bluegrass, and I will say, it was the first time they were there, and they did a great job, I think. If I had a nickel for every time someone has asked me, whether it's in Raleigh or whether it's in Chattanooga, when IBMA is coming back to Owensboro, I'd be a wealthy man. We didn't get the World of Bluegrass back, but we got Adam Engelhardt here, and I consider that a major win for sure. Trust me, many here know how hard we worked to try and bring the World of Bluegrass back here to Owensboro. We just couldn't do it. But it's going to come back. Eventually, it'll come back. So many want to see it here. So, let's fast forward to 2019, 2020, when Andrew Davis visited here. He came here to talk about his book, Town Inc. And if you look on page seven and eight, he says, "As I explored America's contemporary boom towns, I noticed they all shared one trait. They stake their claim as the capital of the world. These audacious claims attract innovators and dreamers." And I'd like to think over the last three years that we've done some of that. Certainly, we've created a buzz and curiosity. And did I mention that if you're from Owensboro, we're quite famous outside of Owensboro, as was the publication yesterday, which is one of many. From there, the Bluegrass Music Committee was formed, and a search began for a consultant. I do want to thank Mike Simpson and Matt Hayden for the $300,000 that was pledged over three years to hire someone who would get up every day and work to make Owensboro the Bluegrass Music Capital of the World. I accepted that role. I pivoted from a 15-year career at Owensboro Health and launched my firm, Represent GPA. I brought over 30 years of experience in government affairs, arts, and economic development, community engagement, plus a lifelong love of music, and eight years on the Board of Trustees of the Bluegrass Music Hall of Fame. Initially, I agreed to a 30-day assessment meeting with stakeholders and developing the strategic comparatives that you'll find. If you don't see it in front of you, you'll find that on page three of your handouts. I want to read those to you. Develop and market the Bluegrass Music Capital of the World brand. Increase visitation to Owensboro by leveraging that brand. Recruit new business, music businesses, and artists downtown. Develop new business-themed events. Establish higher education, bluegrass degree and certificate programs. Identify sustainable funding sources and advance support of governmental and public policy objectives. The initial 30 days turned to a 12-month engagement, renewed twice, all privately funded with no taxpayer cost, set to sunset next month, November 11. We made substantial progress on each strategic pillar. The Bluegrass Music Journey Timeline in your packet outlines this progress since 2022, when I came on board. If you add to that 2024, when the Kentucky General Assembly's $500,000 allocation came about, it's been instrumental in advancing infrastructure. And trust me, as you all know, those things don't magically happen. So, I do want to thank the General Assembly and perhaps one individual in particular that I won't mention that really went above and beyond to make that happen for Owensboro. I believe that person's here. And now, to page four, for the meat of my comments, return on investment for the City of Owensboro. Over three years, the $300,000 consulting agreement provided by Mike Hayden and Matt Hayden and Mike Simpson required no capital payroll, no benefits, no sick time, no health insurance, no office costs, and no travel costs. In return, we expect nearly an eight-to-one return on investment of 2.37 million. Granted, the documentation mostly is in the back of your packet there. It's going to change. It's going to change with Rick. It's going to change with some other projects that come online. But the states, I will mention this because I think I brought it. I got the opportunity to go to Bluegrass in La Roche, France. Rick Ferris was the headliner there, and it warmed my heart. It's the largest bluegrass festival in Europe, and it warmed my heart when he was introduced, and he was introduced as hailing from the Bluegrass Music Capital of the World, Owensboro, Kentucky. I don't know what those people were saying in French, but they were clapping. And I don't know how you put a number on that, but it was really great. great to see. So anyway, while the, while the budget may sunset, the money's not. It's here in Owensboro, and it's going to move forward. We got about eight projects we're budgeted for. There's two that are, there are three that are mostly complete, two that are currently being done, and two, two on the horizon. So city staff's been tremendous, partners, particularly on Kentucky Guitar Works and Ferris Guitar, where a $140,000 initial investment transformed a vacant building into a flagship project. And as we finalize equipment purchases, the projects are strong. Soon Owensboro built Ferris guitars will be in the hands of players worldwide, which is what we envisioned from the very beginning. Rick's here. If you have any questions, you can certainly address those to him. But it was a Cinderella slipper, this whole project, many years ago. So I can't underemphasize the project and the risk and the gamble that has been taken by many, many sleepless nights. I know Scott Napier can relate to his journey from Hazard, Kentucky, to spearhead the OCTC project, or Shane DeWitt, Rick's apprentice, who also made the move from Kansas. There are so many selfless individuals in this room that have sacrificed our community. To each of you, I say thank you very much for that sacrifice. Amy, thank you for that sacrifice. I do want to note that each month I'm on a scheduled conference call with cities from across the country, and those cities may be Sacramento, Detroit, Northwest Arkansas, Lafayette, Louisiana, Memphis, Baltimore, Charlotte, and so many more. And why am I on those calls? I'm on those calls to talk about music, expansion, celebration of the nighttime economy, and of course, branding. Here in Owensboro, we're not trying to build, to brand the world's biggest ball of twine. We don't need to. We have bluegrass, we have so many other genres of music right here. So many of these cities want the true niche that we have. We can truly say or go, "Bluegrass and beyond," like no other place on this continent. Make no mistake, we're in strong competition for the economic benefits that come from music. And yes, so many want bluegrass, but rest assured, we're at the table because we must be. Case in point, I was at the Native American, or the Americana Music Festival and Conference in Nashville a few weeks back promoting the BMI, and I offer Louisville as an example, and I quote, "Bluegrass is Louisville's take on, on Kentucky's bluegrass, beloved bluegrass music. Born in the hills of Appalachia and raised on acoustic instruments and rich traditions, it's a celebration of Kentucky roots music that blends bluegrass with Americana, blues, and jazz." And I just, I brought some of this here because this is just a little, there's picks, you know, if you're, if you, if you pick, you know, you can never have, you're always left with the picks that, you know, make it into the laundry or whatever it may be. Anyway, they do a really good job in Louisville, of promoting Louisville as, as a bluegrass place. So great for, for Chris, who's, and his team in Louisville that's, that's promoting that. They're everywhere. They're all over the country. They're everywhere. So let me offer some closing remarks. Is the work finished? No. Building infrastructure takes time. And in the words of George O'Keefe, "Nobody sees a flower, really. It's so small, it takes time. And to see takes time, like to have a friend takes time." If funding continues, will I keep going? Well, to quote award-winning Owensboro sound engineer and friend Steve Chandler, "If you quit, you'll never succeed." Whether it's me or someone else, the next phase will need to be tweaked, both structurally and financially. However, I firmly believe we're going to get there. For three years, we've gone fast because in instances, we've gone alone. Now, however, to go far, we must ensure that we go together, all in. That decision isn't mine to make, but many of you here in this room brought us to this point, so it's your decision to make. Stay tuned for the rollout of the Greater Owensboro Music Census later this month. It has the potential to revolution, be revolutionary for our community and our region. I can't say when yet, but soon. Stay tuned. And as for the time now, it's 5:22, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any questions for Rick as well, or any of us.
Questions from the group? I don't think you missed a lick or pick.
All right. Well, that was the first part of my presentation. No, I'm kidding.
Nice talking to you.
Yep. I'm done.
Thank you, Steve. Valuable asset for our community. We appreciate you.
Yep.
And I guess without further ado, Representative Miles, Caucus Chair of the Republican House, and lady who got us the workforce stuff and bluegrass stuff, and would you please stand and, so we could shower you with some applause for all you do for our community? I thought I'd get you on before the leaf collection. Nothing. Hunter. Item 4D, leaf collection season.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Hunter Reagan. I'm the sanitation manager for the, with the Owensboro Public Works, located at 1410 West Street. Tonight, I'll be talking about our upcoming leaf collection season, which runs from October the 16th to Sunday, February the 15th. Some of the reasons we start early to mid-October are as to give us time to train new and seasonal staff and test and prepare our equipment, and stay ahead of heavy leaf buildup before the peak of the season. There it goes.
Hold your mouse just right.
This year, we'll be starting in Zone 3A. This zone runs from Frederica Street to Plum Street and from Fourth to Ninth Street. Every year, we rotate the starting zone for fairness. As last year, we started in Zone 2A. Now, we're in Zone 3A. During the leaf season, we'll complete three passes, which consist of 10 zones per pass. Our target dates are with the first pass going from October the 16th through November the 14th. The second pass is from November the 17th to December the 19th. And then the third pass is from December the 22nd to February the 15th. This will include all call-ins at the conclusion of the third pass. Our methods of disposal consist of three methods, the first being six trucks with vacuums attached. Each truck will be assigned with three employees. We'll have one driver, one person operating the vacuum, and another raking leaves. All trucks work together in the same zone until it's finished, and then we'll move on to the next zone. The second option is our bag leaf collection. Residents can place their bag leaves at the back of the curb, and our two yardway trucks, each with two employees, will collect them on a regular trash day. The third and final option is bag leaf drop-off. We'll have six orange dumpsters located at the Owensboro Sports Center parking lot, where residents can drop off their bag leaves at any time. Community awareness. Some of the ways we bring awareness include posting daily updates on our city website at Owensboro.org. Information is also shared through Facebook, the Messenger Inquirer, the Owensboro Times, WBKR, and WBIO. Residents can also sign up for text notifications by visiting Owensboro.org and selecting the City Text Alert option. Residents can also help by not blocking piles with parked cars and keeping 10-foot clearance from fixed objects. Do not mix brush or foreign objects with leaves. Do not wet leaves. Do not cover the water meter jar lids, as the machines will remove these. In addition, we ask the residents to rake leaves curbside in yard within six feet of the curb, not in the street or the sidewalk. For information, residents can check OMU mail inserts, leaf season press release, newspaper updates, and our city website. Our hours of operation will be from Friday, or Monday through Friday, 6 to 2:30, and as needed, as needed basis, Saturdays from 6 to 12, and occasionally extended hours as So for a 2024-25 recap, we had 1,814,092 pounds, which is also equivalent to 1,116 tons of leaves. The first pass was completed November the 13th. The second pass was completed December the 18th, and the third was completed January the 23rd, with all call-ins completed by February 15th of last year. Questions?
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, this is like herding cats. I've been on a leaf run, and I've run, I got out and helped the guys a couple of years ago. They do great work. You do great work. Public Works is, should be greatly commended, and it's one of the nice benefits of being a resident of the City of Owensboro, along with sanitation pickup. So if you're not a resident of the City of Owensboro, this is an outright commercial. Sign up to get leaf pickup.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate that.
Where do all the leaves go?
Where do they go?
That was my question.
Uh-huh.
We transport them to the transfer station, and then they actually take it and turn it into compost out there at the landfill.
I thought maybe. Okay. Anybody else? Kathy? Nothing? Okay. Thank you, Reagan. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider approval of minutes dated September 16th, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I'd like for you to consider these board appointments. Dugan Best Neighborhood Alliance, reappoint Lakeisha Hall to a two-year term effective from October the 17th, 2025. Human Relations Commission appoint Glenda Wright to fill the remainder of an unexpired term ending March 19th, 2027, replacing Kathy Estes. I'll make a motion to approve these appointments. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, ordinance. State.
Ordinance 18-2025, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the acquisition of property located at 315 Walnut Street. Publicly read for approval on one reading the 7th day of October, 2025.
Thank you. There'll be no vote. City Manager, please discuss.
Mayor, happy to provide an overview of what we're doing here. So this is first reading of an ordinance reestablishing the position of Assistant Occupational Tax Administrator. Due to the increasing workload within the city's tax department, who also collects county occupational tax, it's become necessary to reclassify one of our three occupational revenue clerk positions to an assistant tax administrator role. The change enhances the department's depth of knowledge and operational capabilities, but also provides a second staff member qualified to perform net profit audits, and those audits ensure everyone pays their fair share. And so additionally, the new occupational tax administrator will support the occupational tax administrator in several key areas, including reviewing and approving refund requests and assisting in the management of our developer incentive agreements. So this change from this ordinance does not add a new city employee, it is reclassifying or transitioning a revenue clerk to an assistant occupational tax administrator.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Item seven, municipal order.
Municipal Order 22-2025, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the acquisition of property located at 315 Walnut Street. Publicly read for approval on one reading the 7th day of October, 2025.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this municipal order, please.
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, and this item and the next item are related, so I'll let my comments now cover both items, if that's okay. So this, the city owns approximately 90% of the block between Third and Fourth Street and Cedar and Walnut Street. It's the block where Roberts Brothers Automotive was located for many years, and Sunlight Studios was located on Third Street there as well. You can see in the map, I'm talking about the area that we currently own is shaded in the light blue. And for context, this block is immediately west of where we are building the indoor sports facility right now. So you can see the, the construction there across Cedar from the area in blue. And so this municipal order approves the purchase of 315 Walnut Street, which is a small parcel there in the dark blue on the left side. The next item approves the purchase of 317 Walnut Street, which is the parcel below that in green. And so again, we own, after this, it'll be over 90% of the block. And so at some point, we would anticipate acquiring the full block for a future development project. In the meantime, it will serve as parking for the indoor sports facility or other events that may be occurring in our downtown, when parking is often as, as a premium. So it would be our intention eventually to acquire the whole block. These two were just available. They, one of them approached us, and we were interested in buying that, of course, and the other was a vacant rental house, and so the owner was willing to sell at this time. Purchase price for 315 Walnut is $100,000, and $115,000 for the property at 317 Walnut.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So this takes property off the tax rolls. Is that what you're telling me?
It does, Mayor. I mean, to a longer-term use, but yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, please.
Municipal Order 23-2025, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the acquisition of property located at 317 Walnut Street. Publicly read for approval on one reading the 7th day of October, 2025.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
And City Manager, you've already spoken to this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, City Manager item.
First City Manager item is the August financial report presented by Angela Wanniger.
Ms. Wanniger, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right. So this PowerPoint presentation will be on the general fund activity, and it's for the month of and the two months ended August 2025. For more detail, you can refer to Page Three of the financial packet. So for the first slide, the month of August, our actual revenues were $5,433,698, which were more than budgeted revenues of $5,326,409, resulting in a variance of $107,289. This variance is primarily due to higher insurance premium license fee and property tax, partially offset by lower occupational withholding and timing and funding from the Owensboro Riverport Authority. That's a pretty good variance there, isn't it? That shows good budgeting. I just had to throw that out there. So for the two months ended August, total actual revenues of $10,883,74 were more than the budgeted expenditures of $10,878,138, for a variance of $4,936. This variance is primarily due to higher insurance license fees and property tax, partially offset by occupational withholding and timing and funding from Owensboro Riverport Authority. I know it sounds pretty repetitive from the one month, but one month, two months, there's not much change. In the month of August, actual expenditures of $5,625,74 were less than budgeted expenditures of $7,605,86, for a variance of $1,980,12. This variance is primarily due to timing and transfer to OMU and insurance. And OMU is diligently working on getting their reimbursements for that transfer, so hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, you won't have to hear about that again. And for the last slide, for the two months ended August, our actual expenditures of $12,122,273 were less than budgeted expenditures of $15,292,182, for a variance of $3,169,909. This variance is primarily due, again, to timing and transfer to OMU in capital and in savings and personnel services. And I'd like to add that for the capital budget, we typically put 100% of that budget earlier in the year, not knowing for sure when departments are going to spend their, their capital. So we'll have a variance there in capital throughout the year. And we've also got savings and personnel services already of $360,000. So I just wanted to point those facts out, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Mayor Pearlton?
Just one question, Angela. So occupation tax is reliant on the health of our employment picture, and on a national basis, we start, we keep hearing employment rates are down, there's a decline in new hiring. Have we seen any hint of that vis-à-vis using the metric of the occupation tax in Owensboro?
Well, the health and wealth of the community can be measured by occupational and net profit, and there's many factors that go into the occupational withholding. There's timing, sometimes a larger company may have a big bonus. Sometimes there's a three-month pay period, and we may inadvertently budget one that month for two. But at any rate, we, we've looked, and there's no, nothing that has shown us, nothing that we can see of any downturn that brings concern. It's, it's just, it just goes as, as the employees are paid, so.
Yeah. I mean, my observation is I haven't seen any wholesale layoffs or big Yeah, I mean, my observation is I haven't seen any wholesale layoffs or big closures. I think we're in pretty good shape compared to the national picture.
Yeah.
And, and your numbers seem to reflect that, but I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good, healthy, steady stream. We have seen a little bit of a decline from budget, but on an actual basis, it's, it's holding.
And thank you again for you and your staff's great work.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I'll pass the word on. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I could comment, something that...
Would you like to come?
Yeah, I would. Claudia Kancy is gone, but at the executive committee meeting for the Economic Development Corporation today, we did talk about how our local unemployment rate is lower than both the state and national average.
As is our work participation.
I think ours was higher than the state average, but lower than the national.
You want to rassle over that?
Well, not particularly.
Okay. I just, I don't pay a lot of attention to unemployment, I pay more attention to work participation, because there are a lot of people, you know, that could be working that are not working, and then with the great, big, beautiful bill where they, you know, they're trying to time-medicate requirements to work requirements, and there's a, there's a pretty big fluctuation in that, so sometimes I, I just kind of look at work participation, just me personally. Okay.
Could I add a note?
Sure.
As we're talking about unemployment rates and employment, to Mayor Protem's comment, the current employment for Davis County is forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, and this time last year was forty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-one. So there's increase there.
That is good news.
Yes, yes, yeah. And, and there's more detail on, on page one of your financial packet for, for all that.
We hear all this doom and gloom, and I, I didn't think we were in that boat, but I wanted to get an assessment from an expert, so.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to file the report for audit. Could have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion anymore? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight B, please. City Manager?
Personnel appointments tonight, for your consideration, new hire probationary full-time non-civil service appointments of Robert Robinson, road worker with the Public Works Street Department, effective October twentieth, and Michael Ruth, maintenance equipment operator with Public Works Street Department, effective October twentieth. And then regular, full-time, non-civil service appointments are those who have completed their probationary period. We have Robert Luttrell, police officer with OPD, effective October eighth, Joseph Cowan, police officer with OPD, effective October eighth, and Dylan Nobles, firefighter with OFD, effective October seventh.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve these appointments. Could have a second, please?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. City Manager?
Two additional comments tonight. Mayor, first, on late last month, I think on September twenty-fourth, the city marketing and communications team had a good day at the Kentucky Association of Government Communicators Award luncheon. Our communications team of Shaylee Velez and Matty Coleman Hayes were honored to bring home three awards to Owensboro. The overall award of excellence for best social, most, best social media presence for the city generally, an award of merit for the best short-form video for End Street, Bye 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 Potholes, if you remember that one. And then honorable mention for best long-form video for the twenty twenty-four State of the City, actually. So we're fortunate to have a good communications team. We know how wonderful they are, but it's great to see their work recognized by their peers across the Commonwealth, so certainly want to acknowledge that. Second item is, this past week, as you know, we hosted our first-time event called Illuminate. The event, I think, went very well and has generated considerable positive feedback. I was looking at comments on the Owensboro Times article about the event this morning, and it was the first time I'd ever seen all positives on an Owensboro Times article. I was actually pretty floored, so I'm sure I jinxed it, but at that point, it was forty for forty, and all being positive comments when I checked. So Public, Public Events Director Tim Ross will provide a brief overview of the event.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, like Nate said, if anybody wasn't aware of what took place this last weekend, we've got a quick recap video for you. So just a quick recap, obviously, this, it was a new event that we have been kind of brainstorming for years just to do something drastically different than what we do with some of our other big signature events throughout the community. It was received really, really well. Shaylee and Matty, like Nate mentioned earlier, do a tremendous job, and we've been working with them for quite a long time to come up with a marketing plan to develop this new event and to market a brand-new concept, and really excited. We had over a million views over the last twenty-some days on our Facebook page, which is fantastic for, you know, drawing folks, drawing attention to Owensboro, whether or not they came to the event or not, to see what's going on and taking place in our community is, is fantastic. So I'm really excited about the turnout that we had, the number of visitors we had from out of state, lots of different things happening in the community that weekend, and so certainly not everybody came specifically for that, but what a great opportunity for them to enjoy what Owensboro has to offer, you know, on a regular basis, whether or not they were in town for the tennis tournament or a ball tournament or something like that, to be able to host. And just like Nate was referencing, a lot of positive comments throughout, very few negative anything about this unique event that we did. So excited to be able to host it and look forward to bringing that back again in the future as one of our big signature events that we do. So happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to give a quick highlight.
Questions? You?
Me.
Okay.
I don't know that I have a question, but, and maybe I should have saved it for the end, but I do want to say, being involved in so many events over the years, this is probably the biggest event that I've ever seen parents with their children interacting together. You know, usually you have the parents, and they're watching the kids do this, so the kids are watching, and it was just amazing, and the number of people that were out and with their kids and just seeing this, the, the door thing was fascinating to me at the, in the, where the fountains are, and I watched a gentleman with his three-year-old, had him up in his arms, and he'd open the door, and there'd be a whale, and he closed the door, and then he opened again, and the child would get, I mean, it was congratulations for doing something that was so centric to a family environment.
Thank you. Yeah, we were really intentional to try to create different experiences for folks to be able to interact in different ways, in different styles of entertainment and art throughout that. Great partnerships, music studios just killed it, did a great job partnering with all of their dance groups that were part of it, Symphony Stroll, obviously, Bluegrass Museum was a part of that event, public schools, OPS, DCPS, so lots of great community partnership to make the whole weekend happen. So excited for it and excited for it to come back again in the future.
And my great-grandson Baker, he almost jumped out of the stroller. His feet and arms were going so fast, we had to hold him down in there, and that special when that big ball came up, because we were at McConnell Plaza, which was an excellent spot to watch it. So good job again.
We try. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, communications from elected officials. Commissioner Sanford.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few observations. Very good, Tim. Nothing but positive feedback. It was a great event. That was number one. Number two is just hearing everything that I'm, I've heard tonight about bluegrass and all the things that I see around our community. I'd like to congratulate all the elected officials up here and all the staff and everything that you guys do. We've got so much going on here, and I think a lot of times in a, when you're from a city, you just don't realize what's going on, because you're just, you kind of see it every day. But people from the outside look at us, and they see a lot of things going on. There's dirt moving on the east, the west, north, south, there's all kinds of things going on in our community, and it's because of the staff, everything you guys have done, great leadership, the mayor and all the elected officials have done a great job, state partners, you guys have done a great job. So I think we're very, very fortunate, and the thing is, I think we just keep pushing and keep moving forward, and only good things are happening. I think there's good vision up here. People here can see what can be, and it's, it's happening all, all around us. So we need to be very appreciative of everybody and everything they're doing, and I really do appreciate it, the staff. You guys have done an excellent job. Continue the good work. Thank you.
Never stay the same. You either get better...
Yeah, you just got to keep pushing.
Or you get worse.
That's right. You can't sit on the lead, you got to keep going.
You going to talk again? Okay, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add, in my other role as managing a hotel, there was only one street open that you could actually get down to downtown on the riverfront, and that was Saint Elizabeth, and that was so that my hotel guests could actually get to the hotel. And I would like to commend OPD and all of their officers for the smiles they kept on their face, in spite of people like, what do you mean, I can't drive down that street and type thing, and just a lot of our city staff, like complimenting everyone, but it was, it was very great to see them interacting and how they interacted with everyone and, and made it easy and gave them great information. So, Art, I just want to say, give those guys and gals a big hand, because I'm sure they took a, a lot of frowns along with the smiles, okay?
Commissioner Maglinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo, echo the commission, and I also want to congratulate the Owensboro Convention Center. They hosted one of the largest conventions they had with Kentucky League of Cities. It was great to go meet all, all the mayors and city staff administration, or city administration all over the country, I mean, all over the state. We filled up all the hotels. It's exciting for Owensboro. And then also had the pleasure to join Commissioner Glenn at the Davis County Jail earlier this week with the job reentry program that, very blessed to have support from our city and the county and KCTCS and EDC, so that was a great event. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Protem?
Just a couple of things. We, people may sometimes say, there's nothing to do in Owensboro. Hear that all the time. So in the space of one evening, we went, my wife and I went out to dinner to one of our local restaurants, then we went to Voices of Elmwood at Rose Hill Cemetery, Elmwood Cemetery, and it was beautifully done. We've never been able to get tickets, so it was our first time, and it was a World War II-themed set of dramatic vignettes by people who had grown up in Owensboro. And my favorite was Mush Morton, the captain of the Wahoo, who was born in our area, but they all did a good job, and it was beautifully done. It was a fundraiser for the Museum of Science and History, so I want to give kudos to all, everyone who performed in that, in the Museum of Science and History. That's a really nice event. Then we went to Illuminate, same night, and I want to congratulate Tim and his staff and everyone that was involved, Shaylee. It was a wonderful event. We couldn't see all of it, because we didn't, we got there a little late, but the one element I think we definitely agreed as a couple, we enjoyed, we walked into River Park Center, we didn't really know that was a spot, and there's this, the symphony, a portion of symphony playing, and they had it beautifully lit, and it was almost meditative. And they did a beautiful job playing a series of, of sinatas and song sets. So I just thought it was a wonderful event, both outdoors and in, and I want to commend the mayor and the city manager for perfect weather, perfect weather. Good job, guys. So it was wonderful. And then the last thing I want to just touch on, on Sunday, I went to the Walter Freeman Training Institute, where they had a, basically a memorial celebration of Walter Freeman's life, and it was very interesting. I, I did honestly know that mu, much about Walter Freeman, but I learned a lot, and many of his relatives were there, and it's important to recognize the love for our city Walter Freeman had. They didn't name the training center after him gratuitously. He really deserved it, because he loved our community and moved our firefighting experts and professionals forward with the things he did during his almost twenty years' service to the department. So that's all I've got.
Okey-dokey. All right. We'll move to open public forum. Members of the audience may address the Board of Commissioners on any matter of public concern that was not on tonight's agenda. The comments are limited to issues within the scope and responsibility of the City Commission. Commission meetings are held to conduct city business for the benefit of Owensboro citizens and taxpayers. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the City Commission, please make their way to the podium to be recognized. Speakers must state their name and address for the clerk's record, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. So who's up? Number one, Oga.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Commissioners, Glenn and Maglinger and Niesmith and Sanford, excuse me, and City Manager, Mr. Pagan. And I'm not, I'm not sure about these two down here, but...
We're not either. No sweat.
But good evening to you also, and Beth. I just wanted to say, give you some feedback in regards to Grooving on the Green. That was something that was, you know, the heart, the heart of the people that was planning that was in it. It turned out to be a beautiful family affair, kids everywhere, people coming in from different parts of Kentucky, Indianapolis, Nashville, Louisville. We had guests coming in from Georgetown, Kentucky, and the, the bands were fantastic. I don't know if anyone in here had an opportunity to attend it, but if you did, I'm sure that, that you enjoyed it also. So to give the city some feedback, the place that, that it was held at the convention center, perfect spot, the lawn, you know, as far as, as wide as it is to accommodate so many people, and it was so many folks that were there, but the grass wasn't cut. The grass wasn't cut. I mean, not for the event. It was a little embarrassing for guests coming in, and the grass was up to the ankles. And I'm not saying that it wasn't on a schedule, I'm just saying it wasn't cut for the event. There were, you know, just a lot of people out there, and I would, I would ask that when events are set up like that, that maybe if the grass is cut on Monday or Tuesday, that it could be changed to maybe Friday, you know, if it's going to be a Saturday event. And also, the street wasn't blocked, and that was something that we were very concerned about. The request was for one block to be closed, and that's where the food trucks were, and an opportunity for folks to, to kind of walk out in the street without being concerned about the traffic. There were barrels on one side, so it was only like one lane, so just blocking out that one block, we felt that it would have enhanced, enhanced the Grooving on the Green. So that's my feedback, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Chris Stutcher, I live at nine hundred East Third Street in Owensboro. I believe I was supposed to be on the agenda this evening for the Human Relations Commission to be considered as an oncoming board member, if that could be reflected upon. I've been in communication with Ms. Carrico, your assistant, as well as Ms. Rondell and Randolph, the executive director. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, I met with her today, and you were mentioned. Next meeting, you'll be on the agenda. Okay, anyone else? Don't be shy.
I know, right? Sorry. I'm Rick Ferris, live at thirty-nine fifty-one Heatherstone Drive here in town. I recently went to an artist mixer, which was held at the, the new soundstage out on Frederica, which was, it was very cool, it was a fun night. I, I heard from a lot of folks, and overwhelming, you know, we, we don't have a calendar here in town for the arts. I was just wondering if we could maybe, if I could get feedback off-record or later of who maybe we should talk to about trying to get a calendar together for the community, because there's a lot of, there's nothing going on here in town, or, or when we hear about it, we're like, I wish I'd known that, so. Or, or when we hear about it, we're like, I wish I'd known that. So just was-
Sounds like a great job for you.
Hey, you know, I was, I have built a website before. Not that I even would need to be paid for it, but it, it would be nice to, to maybe have something like that in the community. I just wanted to raise the question.
We had one at one time.
At one time?
Yeah, there was a community calendar, and it was run out of the River Park Center, if I remember correctly.
Cool. Thank you.
So that's something that can be managed. We'll call you.
All right, yeah. Let me know how I can help. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter into closed session under KRS six-one dot eight-one zero, parentheses one, close parentheses, parentheses B, close parentheses, for discussion on a future acquisition and sale of property. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and there will be no, there will not be any further business following the closed session.